Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 17th, 2025 meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. Before we get started, I'd like to ask our IT Administrator, Cody York, for a brief explanation. You guys can sit down.
I'm not used to a standing, standing audience when I start, but so I want to give everybody a brief block of instruction. I've spoken to some of you guys leading into this, but I want to give you a little bit of instruction. So first of all, you should be hearing me a lot better from where you are. So there's a speaker at every desk, and that speaker has been EQ balanced to be able to remove the mics at that table and the mics next to it a little bit. That'll help with feedback. And then the mics that you have in front of you, while they're sitting in the cradle, they're charging. When you remove them from the cradle, you'll see they'll blink red and green for about five to 10 seconds while it's connecting to Wi-Fi. Once it's connected, you then can push the button, so it's green. When it's solid green, it's listening to you. You can talk. So I'm going to use one as an example. So that's red. When I push it, green. Okay?
When it's green, you can hear it. Okay? You can hear it. So this is good.
This is not.
This is good.
Okay.
You don't want to hold the mic by the very end. The antenna is in the very end. So if you hold it by the very end, you make it hard to communicate with the Wi-Fi. Okay? So you just hold the mic in your hand and hold it to your, hold it to your mouth. Okay? Then when you are done talking, so once you pick it up or want to get started, most of you guys already, I've already talked to you about this, I would just pull it out of the cradle, let it connect, and push the button to mute it, and then just set it down in front of you. And then when you want to talk, you pick it up, push the button. When it's green, you can talk.
All right. So other things to keep in mind, you are, it's going to be a little different than you're used to. Usually, the speakers at the top of this room are very loud. And you can, in the past, you've kind of heard yourself being loud. It's not going to be like that anymore. It's going to sound, I can barely hear myself. But that's okay. If you speak in a normal voice and you hold the mic correctly, everyone can hear you. You don't have to speak loud. Okay? The normal voice, mic where it needs to be, everyone can hear you, including TV. If we have any issues, if we are dropping anyone, me or one of my staff will come down and give you a little bit of block of instruction. I'm going to ask for your grace. I know that sometimes when you're talking, you can get animated, and that microphone can leave in front of your mouth. Just know, the microphone can only work if you're speaking into it. So if it starts to leave, other people won't be able to hear you in the chamber, and they definitely won't be able to hear you on TV. So you really need to keep that mic in the proper position. Any, any additional questions? Anything I didn't cover? Oh, the podium. So you'll notice at the podium, there's no, you can't see a microphone. There's an area mic right here, and that area mic will pick up quite a bit of range. So this will help when there's two or three people standing up here, when people are standing and they're talking to the chairman. No, it doesn't drop off like it has in the past. So hopefully, that will really help. And then we also have the speaks, the microphones up here are all the same as they were, so there's not really a lot of change up here. That still functions the same way. Good question. Any additional questions? All right. Commission, thank you. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Cody. He indicated that there will be a quiz at the end of our meeting under other business. Commissioner Oliver, been a long time coming. Thank you. At this time, if you would stand with us, please, I'll call on our Commission Chaplain, Romel McMurray, for our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would, let's go to the Throne of Grace. Bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we stand before you this evening to praise you for who you are and for what you do. We thank you for the favor over our lives. Oh, Lord, we ask that you be with the families of two of our county commissioners during this time of sorrow. To Commissioner Steve Piercy on the passing of his father Buddy a few weeks ago, and to Commissioner Robert P. on the passing of his wife Pat just a couple of days ago. May God give you and your family the strength and the will to bear any heavy burdens. May you find comfort in the midst of your grief, wrapped in the love and peace of our God. Psalms 30 and 5 says that weeping may endure for a night, but we know that joy cometh in the morning. I'm sure you believe that they echoed these words. When peace like a river attendeth my way, when sorrows like sea billows roll, whatever my lot thou hast taught me to say, it is well, it is well with my soul. Now, Lord, I ask that you continue to be with us all. Whatever someone may be going through right now during this season, let them be reminded that everything is going to be all right. Lord, for we know that we have bad days, but we choose not to complain. When we look back over our lives and see how far you've brought us, our souls rejoice in hallelujah. As I close, I ask for your divine touch over another one of our own commissioners, Michael Rather. Go and meet every need that he has, Lord. Let him know that everything is going to be all right. Father, I ask that you send a fresh anointing over us all. Continue to guide and keep us. May we continue to do your will. As school starts back in a few weeks, I ask that you be with our teachers, our staff, and our students. I ask that you allow everyone to have a successful year. Remove any violence, any drugs, any arguments, anything that's not like you. I ask that you intervene when it's needed. Thank you, Lord, for our SROs who protect and serve our schools. Lord, we thank you for our entire chef's department. We thank you for our fire and rescue teams. We thank you for our EMTs. And, Lord, we thank you for all of our first responders here in Rutherford County and our military. You are a great God, and we magnify your name. We give you all the glory, the honor, and the praise. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
(Inhales) To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, physical, legal, just as it is. Three white stars in field blue, our people strong and their courage. (Inhales)
You may be seated. Thank you. This time, we'll call on our county clerk, Lisa Crowell, to call the roll. Lisa?
Present.
Commissioner Piercy?
Here.
Commissioner Rather?
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Davison?
Here.
Commissioner Beverly?
Here.
Commissioner Cusch?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here.
Commissioner Paul Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Irvin?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner God?
Chairman Phillips?
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo?
McMurray?
Here.
Gooch?
Here.
Serenyo?
Yeah.
Have a forum, 20 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This time, I'm going to call on our Chairman Pro Tem, Trey Gooch. He has a resolution of sympathy, and he'll also take care of the minutes while he's...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. I have reviewed the minutes. They are in order, so I move that we dispense with the reading and approve them as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve our last meeting's minutes. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chair, this is a resolution of sympathy for the family of Mr. Jesse Buddy Piercy Jr. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Mr. Jesse Buddy Winford Piercy Jr. And whereas Buddy was a lifelong residence of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and a member of the Dunaway Chapel United Methodist Church, and whereas he was a 1955 graduate of Las Casas High School and proudly served his country in the Tennessee National Guard. He was a determined worker that drove a school bus and owned Piercy's general merchandise for 57 years. And whereas we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends, now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on this 17th day of July 2025, in the year of our Lord Jesus Christ, does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Mr. Jesse Buddy Piercy Jr. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Mr. Jesse Buddy Winford Piercy Jr. by the clerk of this legislative body. Mr. Chair, I so move.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comments? We have none. Elections and confirmations? We'll call on our Steering Vice Chair, Commissioner Pettish-Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elections and confirmations? We have one item. Item one brings to the attention to the commissioners, the election of requested notaries in Rutherford County, July 17th, 2025. Commissioners listing of notaries may be found on your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
I have a motion and a second to approve the list of notaries. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Item G, resolution to approve our consent agenda. Chairman Pro Tem, Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing on the consent agenda is the purchasing committee report, and Commissioner Oliver has not asked for that taken off. So I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. No unfinished business, no public hearings. We'll get into our report of standing committees, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Chairman Robert P.
We have no report today. Our next regular meeting is August 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item J2, Public Safety Committee. Chairman Pettish-Reed.
Mr. Chairman, we have no reports. Our next meeting will be July 28th on a Monday here at 5:30 in this room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item J3, Health and Education Committee. I'll call on Vice Chair Phil Wilson. Phil Dodd is on a vacation, family vacation.
Thank you, Chairman. We have no report this evening. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, July 29th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, tonight. Item J4, Property Management Committee. Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no report. Next meeting will be Thursday, July 31st, 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item J5, Public Works and Planning Committee. Chairman Anthony Johnson. Don't have anything, Anthony? This is pretty much the reason we're here tonight, you guys.
Not to see me is what I'm presenting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two things we're going to cover in one resolution. That's a development agreement with the town of Smyrna for the forensic center, and a forensic long-term maintenance agreement. Bear with me, I've got an apparatus on my glasses, so it makes it hard for me to see anything. Bear with me. Whereas Rutherford County building a forensic center, emergency management, emergency medical service station development located within the town of Smyrna, and whereas the town of Smyrna requires that the county execute a development agreement for water sewer, stormwater facilities, as well as a long-term maintenance plan and agreement, copies of which are attached here unto as Exhibit 1, and whereas the county has agreed to execute said agreements attached here on, here too, as Exhibit 1, for purchases, for purposes of this development. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford, Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the development agreement for water sewer, stormwater attached here too, as Exhibit 1, shall be, and hereby are approved, and further that the county mayor shall, shall be, and hereby is authorized to execute the same. Chairman, I so move.
Any questions or comments?
Question.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Oliver.
Because you didn't read the whole thing. What's, what is the cost for this?
This is, should have said in the beginning, probably. This is already appropriated money, no new money. These are, this is just to pay for the fees that are customary to any building that we build in the, in the...
And I do have a question about that appropriation. I didn't get a chance, they didn't air the meeting last night, so I got a chance to watch it this afternoon. And Mr. Hennessy stated that 19.1 million was appropriated for this project, but I thought our last meeting, they went back and forth saying that it was 15 million. So I'm curious about the other 4.1 million. I know y'all had a back and forth, and, and the mayor said it is 15 million, we're going to stay under 15 million, and now we're seeing 19.1 million. So I'm at a loss.
I see Mayor Carr...
If everybody else knows, then...
I see Mayor Carr and Eric Hennessy and Michael Smith here. Anyone, anyone care to answer that?
Yeah, whoever has the answer on top of their head is fine.
So originally, there was 15 million appropriated for the construction of the forensic center on Weekly Lane. Subsequently, there was $4,400,640 that was allocated to the project for the site work, construction of an EMS station, and some additional parking lot work at the county clerk building up there. And so that's a total funding for that piece of $19,400,640. And I believe the purchasing committee, I believe there was a contract signed for a little over 14.9 million. I believe they've changed order of the site work piece into the kind of full agreement. So total funding for that would be a little over 19.4, and then there was previously 900,000 allocated to the project for architect and design work.
So that's for both projects, not just the forensic center?
That's correct.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Commissioner P.
Mine wasn't working. Commissioner Rather here is straightening me out. I talked with the town of Smyrna mayor, also for design needs, of course, the cost, because you didn't get an answer on what the cost. It's approximately $50,000 for these fees that the city's having to cost, work with, and they're working on trying to keep those to a minimum. A lot of that to do with road improvement, sewer, water, and a hook. And then you've got to add the cost of this meeting, which is another $14,000, somewhere in that neighborhood, about $64,000 what this agreement's costing. And, of course, I wasn't at the meeting Wednesday, but that's why I requested this go in to our budget. I pass and save us some money from having to sit here and vote on base.
Other questions or comments?
If I could, real quick, just a matter of form, it looks like the different draft of the resolution that Commissioner Johnson read was sent to the mayor's office for uploading. That's my fault. All it, all the change would have to, that I would request is that, and I can get this to the county clerk, is that this, this resolution approves both of the agreements. The way it's worded, it only approves the one, but assuming there's no objection, I'll just make it right from a legal standpoint to approve both, and I'll send that amended version to the county clerk.
Once again, questions or comments?
There is a, an edit top of page five. It says, "Provide liability insurance twice." So when you're looking at it, I guess you can get someone to edit it as well.
I'm happy to do that, Ms. Oliver.
Seeing none, we'll be ready to vote. If you would, we'll be on the board for this. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Making sure I wasn't the only one.
Lisa, if you would, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oliver?
Five seconds. Aye.
Commissioner Piercy? Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
No.
Commissioner Davison?
Yes.
Commissioner Beverly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cusch?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul Johnson? Commissioner Irvin? Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Dodd? Commissioner Chairman Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurray?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenyo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Last night at our public works meeting, Donna Barrett came and gave a great presentation on many things about recycling, what, what her committee is doing, and things that we can do. I think I got the date right. Recycle Roundup is, is coming up August 16th? I believe that's the right, yeah, August 16th. So there'll be further information, or you can look it up online, but that's like taking your things that you can't really normally take to the recycle centers. We have one other item last night, just for information, because it's in, it's in the mayor's budget, it'll be taken care of through the mayor's budget, but it's, that was also under Ms. Barrett's presentation. That was for Rutherford County to sponsor a recycle roundup that had costed $5,000 in that, in the mayor's budget. He's, so we unanimously supported that. Mayor would take that out of his budget, and we would be sponsors. Our next public works meeting will be August 5th, 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item J6, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Chairman Craig Harris.
We go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It brings us to other business. There's only one item listed there, and it is one that is, just won't go into it. I'll recognize, if you would, District 3 Commissioner, Michael Rather. Wherever you want to, Michael.
All right. If I can get this out. It is certainly, well, I want to say this, Chaplain McMurray, with a prayer, everything is going to be okay. Going to be all right. I promise. Not for me. With a heavy heart, I announce my resignation from Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, District 3, effective tomorrow. I don't know why it's tomorrow, but it's tomorrow. Been an honor, true honor, serving District 3, but for pressing personal reasons, amendments in my family, in the best interest of my district, did I sit down. I have thoroughly enjoyed serving Rutherford County. I think I am a fifth generation in this county. I think my kids are six, so it's, every heart, there's better things to come. I want to thank you all for your support and allowing me to serve good citizens in Rutherford County. And lastly, well, not lastly, I want to thank, I think it was in 2016 maybe, the folks that put me in office the first time, and they were dumb enough to put me in there again. And I want to thank them for their support as well. And lastly, another reason that I was resigning was the sound system. And now we have a new sound system. Y'all can thank me for that. And thank you, Chairman Phillips.
There's a certain process that this commission must go through, and at this time, I'll recognize our Chairman Pro Tem, Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues, and thank you for this opportunity to allow me to make a few comments. So Michael Rather has served seven years of continuous service to the citizens of Rutherford County as a commissioner and a committee member of the Public Safety Committee and the Steering Committee. Michael has significantly contributed to the work of Rutherford County Board of Commissioners and has been an undeniable influence for progress within Rutherford County. influence for progress within Rutherford County. Since 2018, Michael has impacted positive changes and growth in District III and all of Rutherford County with the construction of Rutherford County Public Health and Safety Buildings, two new schools, and several additions, one-stop building, our new transfer station, and our soon-to-be-new forensic center and others. Commissioner Rather, on behalf of Chairman Jeff Phillips, your colleagues here on the commission, and Mayor Joe Carr, I convey to you a heartfelt appreciation and commendation for your dedicated service to citizens of Rutherford County, and sincerely wish you much success, health, and happiness in all of your future endeavors. And so, Mr. Chairman, with a heavy heart, did I move that we accept Commissioner Rather's resignation and to extend our best wishes.
We have a motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Once again, Commissioner Rather. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry. Pettish. Commissioner Reed.
Commissioner Rather has served seven years as vice chairman of the Public Safety Committee. And as chairman of the committee, I have received phone calls from him, and he's received phone calls from me. And those of you that know Commissioner Rather, those have been interesting phone calls. I'd have to say every one of them have been very positive whenever he would call. Everything he's ever called to relate to me were those who say things that were right for Rutherford County. I know there were times he would come to the meeting that he wasn't feeling the best, but he came because he thought it was important in his position to represent the people of his district. Commissioner Rather has given a lot of his time to this county, especially the public safety. Now, some of the stories he would tell as he was a somewhat of a deputy for the sheriff's department, we will keep those quiet, because they were also quite interesting, I would have to tell you. But I want to say he was a number-one vice chairman. And on behalf of our Public Safety Committee and behalf of myself, I'd just like to say thank you, Michael, for everything you've done and for being a good friend. Thank you.
Thank you. This process that we're going, we will go through, we've had lengthy conversations with county attorneys, the process that we will go through, and the recommendation from your chairman and from our county attorney will be explained right now in as much detail as we possibly can go through. The process that we will go through is an expedited process, and we should be able to get through the whole process by the end of August. With that, part of this process will need a formal announcement of the opening, and for that, I'll call on the chairman of our steering committee, Craig Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael, thank you for all you've done. Steering from day one, when you hung in there and did everything I... Mr. Commissioner, county commissioners, I will like to announce the opening for District III. I will be taking applications. We will be addressing this on August 4. So I'm going to defer back to Nick, let him explain to you the legal process. Then, Mr. Chairman, I got a couple motions I need to... Go ahead, Nick.
Nick. Thank you. Just to get through some of the procedural hurdles, the first of which is that the law requires the county clerk to give formal notice to the county legislative body. However, that can be waived, and considering the circumstances now that everybody here has heard the formal announcement, it would be prudent for someone to make a motion to waive that required notice. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries.
Pursuant to our local rules here, the application process is like with what other boards and committees are done. And in that regard, there will be applications that can be submitted to the county mayor's office in anticipation of Chairman Harris's August 4 Steering Committee meeting. Generally, the rule is that those applications have to be submitted the Friday before that August 4 meeting. Because of the tight timeline that we're under and trying to fill this seat, the recommendation is for this body to make a motion to modify that process just for this particular vacancy and allow for applications to be submitted to the mayor's office up till the Friday right before, instead of a week before, and that would be August 1. So if someone can make the motion to modify the process for this vacancy, to allow for applications to be submitted to the county mayor's office or Chairman Harris's Steering Committee that Monday, that would be a proper motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries.
And then the last item from there, steering will take up the application submitted and will make a recommendation to the county commission. So at the August county commission meeting, hopefully you will have before you a nominee or a set of nominees, depending on how steering goes, for consideration by the county legislative body. I would note that just because the Steering Committee makes a recommendation, that does not preclude other nominations from the floor on the day of the county commission meeting.
Now, questions? Commissioner James.
I think this is working out. Can you go over the requirement for someone to apply? What restrictions or guidelines?
Yeah, so there is an application that can be made. They can contact the county mayor's office for that application, and his assistant can facilitate that submittal. And again, I think based on what was just decided by the body, anybody wishing to apply for that vacancy needs to make that known by August 1. And that will be then taken up by Chairman Harris at the Steering Committee meeting on August 4. Again, that doesn't preclude any commissioner from nominating somebody else who has not submitted the application for this particular vacancy. I don't have the qualifications in front of me. If there's anybody listening to the public, you can, I don't want to throw Mr. Farley under the bus, but your election administrator can hopefully answer any questions of potential applicants of whether they qualify from a residency status or otherwise. And if any of the county commissioners have questions about that, feel free to call, contact my office.
Other questions? Any questions? Chairman Harris, did you have anything? Very good. Once again, any questions on the process? I'm not exactly sure how to end this meeting, other than, Michael, I know that whatever life holds for you from this point on will be a process that will be in the best interest of you and your family. And that's our wish for you tonight, that you're prosperous in whatever you do with yourself and with your family. And we wish you the very best, whatever the future has to come. Any other business? Again, thank you for your attendance tonight. With that, we are adjourned.